Two specializations, right? Okay, let us see who can be your project gate. Project gate is mandatory. You have to have one project gate. And you have to get the signature certificate from the gate. So it is mandatory. But the option is you can have either an academic gate or industrial gate. An academic gate is one who teaches for P G degree preferably in management. Or else they can be teaching in commerce or economics. But they should have an relevance to management. They cannot be teaching some other science and gave you, okay? So that is the only condition. So they can be of any relevant management departments, commerce, economics, and there should be a. P G holder, that is enough. It is not mandatory that they should be having a P H D degree. Right? And they should have a seal stamp in the letterhead, like the letterhead or a seal. Which shows that they are teaching in the institution. Institution name and designation is must in the scene. That is the only proof we have who the gate is, right? The same way, the second is option is industrial gate. And industrial gate can be a manager. He should be in a managerial cadre. Right? Above supervisory level, man, he should be having a designation which says he is a manager. Second condition is he should be a P G holder. And to prove this that he is a manager and a P G holder. He should be having a letterhead which displays both or a rubber stamp seal. Which says which designation he is in, which company and the qualification office. Are able to understand? So these are the conditions for a project gate. You have to have a gate. Without gate signature, the projects will not be evaluated. It will be rejected. Right? Where you can get this project days, you can see academic gate, you can contact any college near your place. Where you can see the teachers teaching in these subjects. Or if it is very difficult for you to find the academic gate, then you can approach any. Manager or a higher person who is working in your own organization. And you yourself is a manager. In that case, any peer of you can sign your project. Right? So these are the conditions regarding project gate and you have to have a project gate.
See normally we will, uh, the industrial person.
Kumar, you can take all the questions once the presentation is over, not in between, right? Kindly hold on. The small presentation, once it is over, we can take up the queries. So what could be the project area? See, a project area is the sky is limit for you. You can take up any area. But within the limit of your specialization. For example, a H R student should not do a project. Totally related to finance or marketing. That is the only thing. Stick on to your specialization, okay? And the topic or area you can choose. Whatever you feel like, any problem, what you are thinking about when you are studying your third or fourth semester specialization papers. From that itself, you can take up any topic. It can be a field survey, it can be a case study. It can be either qualitative or quantitative study. You can collect primary data or secondary data. Just you have to go through your first semester research methodology book. Hope you will be having that, right? If you are having that, go through the research methodology book in first semester. You will get lot of details on how to do the project. Right? So research design, scope of the study, all these things will be. In the research methodology book. You have to brush up your memory. You just take it up, read it. You will get all your questions answered on how you have to take up the research work. Right? This is a project regarding the project area. Yes, sir. And the next one is, uh, most query comes with the title. Thank you. Uh, so just we have created some example titles, okay? We don't have any specific title and you need not get approval from us for the title or the guide. Note the point please. You don't have to write to us and get approval for either the title or project day. But you have to comply with the norms what we are giving. If you are not abiding by the rule, then we will be rejecting. So you yourself check. The project gate is coming under the compliance of what we are saying. That's all. You need not get approval from us. Same way titles also, you need, no need to get approval. Just we have given some. Examples on how the title should be. See, a title of project should give a specific information, right? What is the crux of the problem? What you are taking up? Where you are doing it, the location, geo-location or the industry, whatever it is. And what you are expecting out of it. That is what the title, let it be crispy and small. Don't have very lengthy titles explaining like a summary. Right? Just read out the examples like you can have a study on the marketing strategy of so-and-so company. A study on consumer buying behavior of diamond jewelry in any location. A case study on performance appraisal of any I T sector or any sector. Supply of human resource with conditions for whom? Consumer markets, economic implications of what gaming industry. Are able to understand? So you should say what is the problem, where you are doing, why, what is the consequence, what you are expecting? These three should be depicted in the title. That is what we are expecting in the title, okay? And what should be the report content? I hand over to my colleague, uh, let him explain what would be the report content.
Uh, very good afternoon to one and all. Uh, I am Dr. Nizamuddin here. So report content would be, uh, the first is, um, basic requirement, the guide certificate. The guide certificate has to be there. And another thing is student declaration. Student has to declare that this is the original, uh, work done by me. And, uh, the sample is, uh, given in the project guidelines, so.
We will show it later.
Uh, we will show it later. Then a report, report presentation, we will see next slide will show that how the report will be. Then citation and bibliography. So these are the things in report it has to be. Then you can see the table of contents. First is acknowledgement. And next is executive summary. Executive summary in the sense, what you are going to do and what will be the result in, uh. Summarily, you have to write. Then list of table, what are the tables and diagrams you are using that you have to mention. Next.
Are you able to hear now?
Yes, yes, yes.
Yes, ma'am, go ahead.
Yeah, next is list of figures. What are the figure, like figure number one, two, what it represents, that should be in the content page. Next is introduction and design of the study. Introduction in the sense, the topic which you have, uh, taken. Regarding that, we have to briefly, you have to give the introduction, then.
Uh.
Uh, problem of study, what is the problem? What exactly is what you are taking? So that problem you have to say, then. Scope of the study, what is the scope of studying this particular topic? Then review of literature, you need to see the regarding this topic, who has done what? You have to go through some old project, uh, like, uh, research papers, you can Google it out, you can note it down. Recent some four to five years back, you have to note it down. Then objective of the study. You need to mention very briefly, you have to cite the objectives. So objective should not be too big. So three to four points, you can mention the objective. Then based on those objectives, you have to design the research. So how the research would be, then what is the sampling, uh, procedure? And what are the, uh, mode of conducting research, then what are the, uh, this, uh. Data collection method, primary data or secondary data, what you are collecting? Then after that, once your, uh, this research design is over. Then you have to, based on that, you have to make the questionnaire. To collect the data, to fulfill the, all the objective, what you have mentioned is the objective. Based on that questionnaire should be there, so that you can get the reply of those objectives. Once you collect the data from this, uh, questionnaire. Then you need to analyze it by using some suitable statistical tools. You have to use some statistical tool to prove that the result which you are founding is justified. Then next is chapter plan, what are the chapters you are using, chapter one, chapter two, like this, chapter one consists of introduction. The next is objective scope of the study. Uh, similarly, anal- uh, analysis, finding and conclusion, like this chapter number, uh, analysis you have to make, chapter plan you have to give. Then next is you have to get the, uh. Uh, appendices. So that you need to like questionnaire, what you have given that, uh, you need to attach with that one. Finally bibliography, you have to give the, what are the reference you have taken, based on that, you have to resume this one. So this is the basic content of the, uh, this research paper.
So the next is how the report should be presented to us. Once you have done all these things, see we prefer that it should be hard bound. You can have a soft bound copy also, or you can have a spiral binding also, you accept that, but. The problem is you are in various places and you are sending the projects through courier or registered post. So sometimes it may get damaged if you are making a soft bound or you are doing a spiral bind. So it is always advisable, make it as a hard bound copy. And not only that, hard bound copies are more impressive, so it will look better. It is a once in a lifetime, you are going to do M B A, not every year, so make a project a little bit. More nice, okay? And here I would say one more tip also, make a copy for yourself. We need only A four size paper and it's a normal paper you can send to us. But by the time you are printing and making a copy, if it is possible, make a copy for you with bond paper so that it will long last. And get it signed without forgetting, get it signed from your gate. You also sign and again one point I would like to mention in the student declaration, don't forget to sign. Many people are sending the projects without signing you yourself. That will get rejected most of the time. So you should get a gate sign and student sign should be there in the project. Don't forget that. Right? So you have to send it with the hard bound. Then you can print it back to back, no problem. It can be printed on both sides. It should be on A four size paper. The total number of papers can be somewhere around seventy to hundred pages, that is enough for the project. And you have to send this to the controller of examination of Pondicherry University. The full address or where you have to send is given in the. Link in D D E website. All this information is already available in D D E website in download section. You have to go to the download section of D D E website. Project guidelines is available. I have given a link here and just copying and pasting it in the comment section also. Just one second, I am, I am pasting that link to you.
Also send a mail, ma'am.
It is in the download section of website, just for your information only, I'm, uh, trying to paste it. Otherwise, it is nothing that you have to go to the D D E website, scroll down, you will see the download section. Click the download section, you will have project guidelines. Right? See, you are in fourth semester. By this time, you should have explored the D D E website at least. You are a student for two years. It is there.
Thanks.
Right? So you have to send to the controller of examination and they will be evaluating your, uh, report. When you have to send, you have to send it ten days, not more than ten days after the last examination of your fourth semester. Right? Because this gets evaluated along with your fourth semester paper, so don't forget, don't delay too much. Send it around the fourth semester examination itself. So this is a sample cover page available in the, uh, project guideline, just I am facing it here. It's a, it's example cover page. We are just depicting what are all the matters we need in the cover page. Right? So try to follow this. All these information should be available in the cover page of your project. Then this is the certificate of date, uh, this is the format of how you should have a certificate of date. Okay? So it is.
When latest we can send this?
What is that?
When, when, when latest we can send this? The project report?
Let, I don't get you, sir. Can you say it again?
Can we prepare it now and can we, can we send it to within ten days?
Yes, yes, you can, you can, you should start prepare now. It is already high time, you are, you should start preparing. Because during your fourth semester examinations, you have to send it.
So what should be the date we should mention here?
Uh.
What date we should mention?
Manish sir, let us finish the presentation, then we can have the queries, okay? So this is the certificate of date format. See, this is an example, okay? Don't write the same title and all because we get that too. That's why I am saying that. So you have to fill in wherever which is relevant to you, change the name, the gate. Signature of the gate, gate seal, all these things should be there. You should write the type in the gate's name, whoever is there and submit it, okay? So this is certificate of the gate. And this is the format of student declaration. This is also available in that itself, guidelines itself. So this is a cover, uh, format once again, how the student declaration should be. Okay? And here, don't forget to sign. This is where I told you, signature of the student, you should sign here, okay? So this is the end of our presentation. This is what? So these are the basic information you will be needing to submit the report to us, right? Now, uh, the forum is open for you people. Kindly don't ask the questions because if all of you open your mic, it will be a K O's because we have more than two fifty-one here. So kindly type in your question in the chat box. We will try to answer all the questions.
Ma'am, how, how will I send the project?
Just now I told, please, uh, type in the question in the chat box.
I have already sent it to the chat box.
Uh, okay, just I am now opening up, we will see one by one. This is Rohit, okay? Uh, someone has asked to, uh, uh, show. The project copy, we will try, we will bring one project copy and show to you, but it is as usual, you would have seen already, you are all graduates. Many of you would have done the project in your undergraduation itself, it is same, okay? However, we will show a copy to you now, okay? Address to send the project is controller of examination. It is in the project guidelines. Again, I am saying, controller of examination, D D E exam being Pondicherry University. University address is already, you know, you are in fourth semester, I need not tell you that. But why I am saying is you address to controller, not to the director, he is evaluator, right? Then fourth semester exam, fourth semester exam, special exam for twenty-two batch is already announced, the schedule will be, uh, given, uh, thirty-three to seven, I think. Third of October to seventh of October, okay? Uh, third semester results, sorry, I am not authorized to say that, it is again the controller of examination.
Sorry, sir. Uh, the October, that is fourth semester exam?
Yes, fourth semester exam we are talking about, okay?
Special exam is declared on October, three to seven. And you will be getting the date sheet also.
Okay, date sheet, uh, yeah, uh, schedule is given. Rohit has asked, how should you send a normal post? You can send through registered post, that is better Rohit because. You will get a proper delivery. So go for speed post or registered post, that is always advisable because registered post. Speed post, not registered post, send through speed post, not registered post, okay? Send through speed post or courier, that is better, okay? Right? Someone, Nihal has given the downloads URL. Thank you, Nihal. You have made my work easier. Thank you very much. Page limit just now.
Ma'am, uh, D D, ma'am, D D can provide the, uh.
Kindly, kindly type in the questions. What is the page limit? Mohammed Nabill has asked, as we told seventy-two hundred, page limit is seventy-two hundred.
Ma'am, D D can, can provide the recommendation. Later to our manager for the approval of our project.
Rahul Kumar, please type in your questions. Type, type in your question in the comment box. Okay. So Mohammed.
My question is not answered, ma'am.
What is your question? No, it is there, we are coming one by one, wait please. Nihal has asked, sorry, Mohammed Nabill, page limit, minimum is seventy, maximum is hundred. Maximum, it is not that you can give more pages also, that this is advisable minimum maximum limit, okay? It is not that hard and fast tool, if you write, give for hundred and twenty pages, it is not that we are going to reject, okay? It is advisable minimum and maximum what we are saying here. Address again I have told, so please listen to the topic, so don't send a question again and again, okay? Controller of examination, address is the address. Okay, can we do systematic review and meta-analysis as project? Yes. Yes, Vigneshwar, you can do. So Sachin Kumar has asked, madam, could you please share this P P T? Yes, in the descent of, okay, now itself we are sharing the P P T. Yes, it is in the comment box, we have shared. It is done, okay? We know Darren. Okay, you are H R, uh, who will be our gate? See, who will be your gate? You have to find the gate. That's what we were talking for so long. You have to find academic gate, gate near your area. In a college who is teaching commerce, economics or management. Or you can get an industrial gate in your company or any other company who is in a managerial cadre, okay, Udaya Hari? And, uh.
No, ma'am, actually, just a moment, just a moment. Actually, I am the H R manager in manufacturing industries. So I can able to sign my own.
No, 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 that's why I told you, even you are a manager, you cannot sign. You can get it signed from your peer. You can ask your marketing manager or your production manager, whoever is in a manager cadre to. Sign your project.
Okay, ma'am, thanks. You are reporting as H R manager to whom you are reporting, he can be your guide.
Okay, sir, actually I am reporting to operation manager. Okay, I will get sign from my operation, it's not an issue.
Yeah.
The one more thing was I, um, I am, I.
Thank you.
My fourth semester result in June two thousand twenty-four. So now I can.
You know, kindly type in your queries. What happens if the project got rejected? Do we need to redo? Yes. If the project got rejected, that means. How you will know you got rejected? You will get less marks, less than fifty marks. That means you have failed in the project. So you have to redo, you have to resend a new project. Okay? Okay, single side, no, you can type, uh, print back to back, Pradeep Srivatsava, you can use back to back, okay? I can able to sign my, no, we know Darren, as we have referred, you cannot sign your own project. It's need on working model of the project. Mario Infinraj, we are not able to understand your question. Kindly retype your question.
Uh, ma'am, uh, like in our U Gs and P Gs, we used to submit the working models of the project if we are doing something in a software. Uh, software.
No need, no need, no need. Only theoretically, if you submit the, uh, paper, hard copy, that is enough, no need for working model.
And one more thing, madam, is there any voice vaiva for this project?
No.
What is that?
Vaiva voice.
No, no vaiva, no vaiva for this project, only submission.
Okay.
Okay, yeah, Kumar, industrial winter managers will not have the letterhead and seal in that. Visiting card, no, no visiting card, we don't accept. Industrial winter, winter managers should have here, if they don't have a letterhead, then they should have a rubber stamp. With the designation and that qualification, otherwise.
Ma'am, in that case, he has to prepare the stamp, madam.
Yes, yes.
Industry will not give the stamp.
Then, then you have to find academic gate who is having a rubber stamp. See, without that, see, understand the logic. If you are not giving even that, how, what is the proof that he is a manager with P G qualification? How the evaluator will know?
That's why visiting card will be.
No, visiting cards are not acceptable. It is not authenticated, so we don't accept that.
No, he is not authorized.
That is how the official documents is signing without seal.
Yes. See, this is the rule given by controller of examination, right? See, listen, we are just explaining what is the rule regarding the evaluation. It is not up to us to change the rule for now. So we are just explaining you what is the rule. You have to have a rubber stamp, otherwise it will be rejected, right?
Ma'am, the.
You have to send through speed post only. You have to send through speed post, okay? Rudra Raj, can we write on both sides? Not writing, you have to print. You have to print on both sides, not writing, okay? Endowment number, fourth semester, I see that, again, you are retyping the same questions, we just now told. Third semester results, we cannot say anything that will be announced from controller being only. You can expect within fifteen to twenty days as we can say, that's all. Then fourth semester exams are announced, a special exam for twenty-two batch. Kindly go to the D D E website, you can see the circular. So don't type in these two questions and again and again, okay?
After completing, after completing the project, can I get guide signature? Or before even I should get it from them?
No, guide will, yeah, no guide will sign before the completion of project. Once you complete, you print, then only the guide will sign.
No, no, he have to consult the guide before making the project, otherwise he will not be signing.
Yes. We don't do. If you ask us, we will not sign after you completed. The guide is who, who guides you through the project. So from the scratch, the gate should be with you, right?
Who will be your guide for project?
Uday Hari, already we explained with this, who will be your project gate, academic or industrial gate? So go through the P P T please once again, who will be the academic gate, right?
Madam, I have written a question, madam.
Yeah, I am coming, we are coming, Abir, we are coming down, Abir, one by one. Okay, just please sing, can we send via email? No, soft copies are not allowed, just please. Only hard copies. Abir Chai, madam, I am working in P S U, there all the managers have a seal with name and designation. I don't get your question, Abir Chai, can you reiterate it?
Uh, actually madam, uh, in P S U, the thing is that the managers have only the seal which have designation and they are, I mean.
Yeah, so that's why we say manager only can guide, manager should have that seal, manager can sign. With this.
But the thing is that in that seal, they have no qualification mentioned in the seal. And there is also no letterhead for.
Yeah, we cannot accept that.
Ma'am, actually, one minute, ma'am.
Qualification is must.
In the I T industry, they don't have the rubber stamps and all those things, ma'am. They just sign on the laptop.
Yeah, I think kindly mute Thailand cities, I understand. That is why we give the option of academic gate. Please approach academic gate and get it signed from academic gate. Academic gate is preferential. If you are not able to get academic gate, then you can go to industrial gate, okay? So if you are not getting a rubber stamp with the qualification, then you cannot get that person as your gate, simple. Right? So don't ask this question another time because we cannot do anything about that. We need a rubber.
Can we get it signed?
So kindly type, type in your queries, kindly type in your queries.
No, you are not responding. Can we get it signed, uh, for number only?
Can you pujaav?
Pondicherry University.
Can you send to next week? No, kindly send it around your fourth semester exam. Don't send next week. When the fourth semester examination is happening, by that time you send your project, please, okay?
And it should be signed that period only, it should be good sign.
What is the next question?
Or.
Bad data, which one? Uh.
Can we get it signed in advance?
To submit the project, no need to come to the university personally. You can send it by post to the controller of Ekdamne. Okay?
Uh, I cannot able to get you, I am audible to you too. I have one question.
What is that? What's your question? Where?
No, ask him, type, ask him.
You please type your question in chat box.
Okay, but, um, uh, I just need one simple answer to that.
Quick question, read, read.
Vignesh, regarding the project topic of M B A general, since this is not a specialization, you can take any specialization. Like, uh, marketing, H R, uh, finance, any area you can do.
Actually, I am in final, final project in Pondicherry University in M B A finance. Actually, I am in, I, I am in, I am working.
Please type your question. This Sachin Kumar, could you please share this P P T? Yes, we will be sharing at the end of the, already shared, you can see in the chat box.
So with the question, someone has asked that for general, M B A general specialization, they can choose a project of.
You can choose any, any area, like marketing, finance, H R, any area you can choose.
To that, I am from international business, should I, uh, can I also, uh, uh?
No, you have to select from your third and fourth semester specialization topic. Okay. General, general, M B A general, they have the option to, uh, choose anything.
Hello, I have an query, if you don't mind.
Please type it, please type it.
No, 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 I cannot able to type in, my keyboard is not working properly. That's why I want to ask a question to you.
You, tell me.
Actually, I am a competitor, I am preparing for competitive exam for two, three years. So I am interested in banking exams. I am doing M B A finance.
Yeah, you can do from banking on the banking side, you can do the project.
Now, I am studying in Pondicherry University fourth semester there. Uh, 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 my first process is to how to get in. If I have, I have, I have an idea that, uh, credit regions, credit rating, rating agency, I just want to compare between, uh, S B I and the Canara Bank. So this is my project on my point of view, I, but what should the process I should go, whether I, where to get the sign, green.
Your question is not very clear. If you are working in Canara Bank, you can do the project there itself, there is no problem.
Preparing for banking exam.
Even, even as your question is not clear, kindly wait, we will finish off all those in the queue, then we will come back to you, okay? Kindly wait.
Sure, I am waiting for you.
Yeah, okay, then after Vignesh, Charlie, please type in your question. Sachin Kumar. Could you please share this P P T? Already we have shared, kindly see. Pujaya, in our, if our native is Pondicherry means we have sent a project through courier or straightly. Straightly you can submit Pujaya, whoever is able to come to Pondicherry University. Can directly go to the controller of examination wing and submit their project. Hand over that project to the controller wing directly, there is nothing wrong. Okay? But don't ask for any acknowledgement that they will not provide. You can give it to the dispatch section. In the category of examination wing, you are welcome to visit the university. How many persons can be in project? No, it is an individual project. It is not a group project, kindly listen, it should be an individual project. If it is a group project, it will be rejected. Any color for report and page. See, better to have it white, the norm is white. But if somebody is sending in black or also we accept, okay? It is not that we are going to throw it away. So we are just advising you, take it as a white one, that is better, okay? Uh, then Alvin B, kindly suggest regarding the probable person to be a gate. For hospital management course, yes, that is the right question, Alvin. Whoever is working in a hospital, paramedical course colleges. Or a doctor in administration course, like that, you can select anyone. The same applies for hospital management also. whoever is working in a hospital paramedical course colleges or a doctor in administration course like that you can select anyone the same applies for hospital management also academic gate who is teaching in paramedical or medical industrial gate whoever is admin in a hospital it can be a doctor Prem Kumar what is the special examination October three seven you are referring is it fourth sem yes Prem Kumar this is for the twenty two twenty three batch June twenty two batch a special exam is getting conducted by October three to seven kindly visit D D E website notifications all the details are given there
can you miss my question
Neha says thank you okay Kartika Devi how to submit the project you can hand it over directly or you can send through courier or speed post to the controller of examination yeah Kumar in the shield we have not had the letterhead and seal Kumar already we have explained this Fida Shereen when will be the third semester result again I have total hundred times kindly wait we are not the authority to say that ten fifteen days hoga Mohit Goel I am working as a deputy manager P and B can I get it signed from someone senior manager and above yes yes you can get it signed Mohit Goel from above your uh cadet then how many person can be in a project only one Amal Pallur twenty three January batch can write the special fourth exam no see you write read the notification it is clearly mentioned this is only for June twenty two batch why this question arise need not arise right just follow whatever is given in the notification okay Abir Chai P S U managers have not have their own letterhead Abir Chai we have answered that again uh who is this Subangi Vankade madam I am twenty three batch and fourth some exam will be December or October see yours December it will be just now I answered it clearly the notification says it is a special exam for June twenty two batch right then Mujayekumar will have come straight and submit yes you can come straight and submit if it is possible for you but not mandatory Mohan do we need to have a working model no Dinesh Kumar it crossed more than one fifty pages but it is better you bring it down Dinesh Kumar one fifty pages is a very huge project for MBA okay if it is done you are bound it don't now cut or decree or tear the papers off just send it with one fifty papers okay Arpan Viswas is junior manager finance can be a project gate uh yes he is in a managerial cadre uh you can get it guided by him no problem uh which is industry Arpan Viswas can you type in the company name so that we can once again I will check and tell you Kausiga fourth semester month no uh Kartika Devi in general who will gate ma'am kindly go through the conditions again just now we told academic gate a teacher industrial lady a manager okay the conditions are other conditions you go through the
some of my friends are not working to unable to take manager as guide what of what of
ma'am just now I will join the call can I tell you what you have been told
why don't you D D assign a guide subjects team wise
yeah Sachin Kumar so who your question is right but see this is distance and open learning right so we have diversified students from various places that is why we give you the freedom of you selecting a gate from either academic or industrial it is not possible for us to select a gate from your place you have the freedom to select your own gate right if they are not working ask them to kindly approach to the college where they have studied the U G degree and any teacher from that college may help them and in worst case if there is no gate we three faculty are here if they are doing from the scratch we take up to fifteen to twenty students per year and we gave also right so next one is is that uh Nanjani Govindan Fida Shereen third semester result you leave that A B Dinesh Kumar two fifty pages will be okay or not two fifty pages A B Dinesh Kumar I don't understand why you are asking one fifty pages two fifty pages continuously see two fifty pages is too much I don't understand we have told you clearly advisable is seventy to hundred what do you want me to say for two fifty pages I cannot say right it is between you and the evaluator and the controller that's what I if my project is forty forty five pages and innovative innovation will be sufficient Arvind Kumar uh I am not the right person to say this because once again it is risky you will be taking what the evaluator will be thinking about your project we cannot say you can submit forty to forty five pages but whether you will get through the exam we cannot say about that
no you have to include some literature in this
anything anything any any paper see this is not about paper at all Gurban see this is about the area right see whatever you feel like a problem in your specialization you take it up as a project what is the project essentially you are finding something interesting as a problem and you are trying to come out with a solution that's all right others kindly mute your mic please we are coming through one by one question don't talk in between Nanjani Govindan yes yeah you can directly submit to the controller wing we know the run first I am already completed my fourth semester exam in June twenty four okay we don't understand your question we know the run yes you have completed so
if you have not submitted your project report you can submit
I'm actually yes ma'am I complete my fourth semester in June two thousand twenty four but still I am not complete I am submitting my project
now you can submit during the fourth semester examinations happening during that you can submit your project during the fourth semester examination but you have to submit here exam application even for project report unless you submit exam application it will not be evaluated
okay how can I apply my
online you have to submit online application
okay
check website yes online applications are there then within Balakrishnan MBA always same question papers are not see kindly send the questions related to project this is only for project okay we cannot answer other questions it will take time
we'll see the O S M question paper will try to upload it
yeah Kumar industrial will not have the letterhead yeah Kumar we have answered it already Rahul Kumar is university provides a recommendation letter to manager for project for yes if you want a bona fide certificate it is called a bona fide certificate what you have to do is write a request to the director of D D E right or else you can just send a email to D D E help desk the email ID is available in the D D E website send a request email to the D D E web help desk asking for a bona fide certificate don't forget to mention your proper name enrollment number and other details we will send the bona fide certificate to you clear but give time for four to five days working days okay right then Manish Ujwal my session is twenty January twenty three when latest uh Ujwal whenever you are writing your fourth semester by that time you send your project Dina
okay mama
some of my friends are not working so if they are not working ask them to get a academic gate Mohammed Nabil plagiarism problem any percentage uh yes it should not exceed ten percent
no actually I am working in bank field madam can I get from guide from our manager no
yes yes you can get
no issue no
Extoni Joseph what about third semester result that we have already announced you have to wait okay then what is it how many persons can be in project I will pin the presentation so that they can take up this P P T okay I have pinned this presentation so you can take up anytime how many persons can be in project only one ma'am can we submit the project in person directly yes see you are asking the questions again and again same questions T Patibhan thank you for conducting special exam even special exam are we eligible to take exam as usual again during December is it so they can take up the exam again in December after October yes yes if you have arrears or if you are not able to write in October you can take up the December exam okay see others kindly mute your mic kindly mute your mics
aren't able to view the presentation
it is pinned ma'am just to see the comment section
ma'am the presentation said access denied
okay okay I'll just wait after this we will try to send it once again okay
okay ma'am
okay Niveda Jagan project after fourth or before or see the project should be sent around the fourth semester examination you can send one week before the fourth semester or ten days after the last examination not before ten days not after ten days try to stick on to that why we say that is evaluation is done along with your fourth semester papers so it will be easier for the examination wing to access your project that is the logic okay so don't send twenty after twenty days of exam it will not be included can we submit in person yes Dakshana Murti madam O C T exam is for twenty two academy here not for yes you are right again Niveda Jagan has asked something what is that Mohammed Nabil plagiarism report no you don't have to send a plagiarism report not required you need not send Mohammed Nabil instead of project I will choose two more theory paper no shut up Bhavata Rani on your mute please Bhavata Rani mute your mic
instead of project report I will choose to no you cannot choose any theory paper you have to submit the project
mandatory
uh we don't
uh P P T link we will give
I have joined November two thousand twenty two then my fourth semester exam will be December
no October October
October you can write
Prem Kumar your special exam is on October if you are not able to write in October yes you referred to the notification if it is not possible you can write in December Amal Pallu twenty three Jan batch no no Seva Guru Yam is it mandatory to have the both academic and industry gate no you can get have either or you can have any one gate you can have academic or industry okay Deva Sena can I get sign from my M D madam yes you can get from the M D very well then Banam Banamati Saravanan I get M of three thousand what is that
three thousand three book
sorry Banamati Saravanan we are not able to understand your question Rahul Kumar the university will give a bona fide certificate you have to send your request letter to D D E help desk
I have not attended my third semester but I could see in the timetable which posted website for the subject for third semester when could clear those exams
you can clear those exams during December twenty four exams Avitra
Sachin Kumar the P P T access required okay
yes Sachin we have already sent once again we will send
ma'am when we submit
that is the same question
uh do we need to submit working model
no Mario that is also already these questions already answered already answered
submit the project
already answered they are just pasting it again and again
we don't have access okay same same
same viva ose will not be there uh Krishan Kumar not having the education
then how he can be the
no no education qualification is mandatory Krishan Kumar they have to have the education qualification in the seal
two thousand twenty three December to twenty five
Sai Ma Farin below our my queries for I B is it mandatory to have gate for similar field specialization
that's answered ma'am
yeah you can have gate who is teaching management commerce or economics it is not that it is to be I B okay you can have any gate from any
just to add to it ma'am can the guide be from the Pondicherry University itself for
yes yes of course if you can get get any gate no problem at all Subangi Vankade
industry or office any office automation uh manager see this okay ma'am
yes 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 we show that mentor and industrial manager stamp mandatory no it is mandatory there is no other way sorry please share the demo project yeah you can show this demo project now okay then Sachin Kumar P P T access that is okay uh is it mandatory to have seventy pages minimum yes mandatorily it should be around seventy to eighty pages it will not less than that that's all I think letter pad uh thank you for conducting special exam even we
ma'am can we get any confirmation that we have received a report can we get any confirmation that you
Epatibhan yes if you are not working anywhere you can get from the academic gate you can get the signature from any college uh Ajna M A if you are not able to attend in October kindly you can write it in the December examination all of you kindly mute your mics then who is it Dinesh Sabat October special is okay this question is already we have
hello ma'am ma'am I will have happier in December
Abir Chai has asked a question madam uh if you people are talking then what we answer we are giving others cannot hear kindly mute your mic you are not supposed to talk while answering is answers are given kindly mute your mics Abir Chai a professor of N T T R can be a project gate no problem okay he is a professor of education and management department yes yes education yes he can
I am already completed
same same question we know that and we have already yes these things we have already Arun shall be uh for MBA general we can choose any project yes for general people you can select any topic don't worry okay it is MBA general codes you can select anything Amit Kanogia
is M C A is qualified to sign ma'am
Amit Kanogia yes if you are not appearing for fourth semester examination whenever you are appearing for fourth semester that time you submit the project report because you have to apply for that examination also you will be applying for six papers during fourth semester right so when you are applying for other five subjects you apply for project also and by that time you submit your project Amit this is answer for you
fourth semester is October yes it is October
Rahul Kumar P U D D will provide a recommendation letter is that already we have an answer Vikneshwar W G R I am from O S E M respected gate should be no see already we have told the gate can be of any specialization but only a teacher from commerce economics and management that's all no specialization necessary
ma'am can we get any confirmation
you have to get the concurrence from the D D faculty to be your gate you have to contact them and get it done okay Rahul Kumar all these are already answered just wait we will finish off the questions Arpan Viswas also we have answered already all these things we have answered already Usum Sirvi what is citation in report content can you please explain see if you are doing review of literature you will be taking up some books or journals to be in review of literature you have to write what is the book what is the page number yes that is called citation the model is available in the project guidelines okay Lavanya after completing the project
hello madam
type in the question in the box all the same Niveda Jagan is testing the question again we have already answered it others cannot have the chance Niveda Jagan please stop
okay what is
Chitra Jayachandra can you please type in the question
madam
ma'am can you send copies of the project no Chitra Jayachandra what what is the question say
madam to whom we have to select madam project
have you attended this session Chitra Jayachandra
yes madam
yeah kindly go to the P P T we have given in that we have given the conditions or else go to the D D E website in the download section there is project guidelines the conditions for gate is given clearly there kindly read it
thank you thank you
okay Danam Lakshmi M H R department how to discover the name of project gate yes all this okay I think we have almost uh answered all the question just please sing letterhead sufficient or rubber stamp yes letterhead is sufficient a proper printed letterhead not that computer printer letterhead is not acceptable a proper press printer letterhead if the rubber stamp is not available computer printer letterhead is not acceptable
is M C A is qualified to sign madam
what is an M C S
master of computer application
no
That's the qualification.
Lately has asked, is there a Viva O C in project, no. Manish Ujwal, still you are ans, you have given your answer, what is, what do you want more?
No, I want, can we get any confirmation that university has received our report?
No. Niveda Jagan, kindly stop pasting the question, you are taking up the chance of others.
Share the P P T again ma'am now.
What is that?
Just wait, we will see. Wait for something.
Hello ma'am, hello.
Here, that is, Agilam became Murgan. Uh, ma'am, a person on nearby to university, shall we submit project by person directly? Yes, yes, you can submit project directly. Okay, I think we have almost answered all questions after it all. Should we mention the date of completion start? No need to mention all these things.
Ma'am, principal from arts college, it's okay?
Yes, yes, yes.
Ma'am, I am working as assistant professor in commerce in V I T, so whom should I select as a guide and can I submit with my designation?
No, you cannot sign, you ask any of your friend to sign sir, it is very simple, you ask any of your colleague to sign for you.
Okay, 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 thank you ma'am, thank you.
Okay, you cannot sign for your own project.
Sure ma'am, sure.
Just get it done from anybody else.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Okay.
Hello.
Ma'am, can you please share the P P T again?
Yeah, we are doing, see, once we will finish off the questions then.
I am one more, within the group of our like the people who are doing M B A, if they are designated as managers, they can sign it.
No, no Kumar, they cannot.
Ma'am, I have asked a question about the junior manager, you asked about the industries from power industry, can a junior manager?
Junior manager can sign.
We have a power industry, can you say?
What is the question again?
No, you asked about the industry of the junior manager, he is from power industry.
Yeah, that doesn't matter.
Okay, okay, sure, thank.
Are you working in the same industry?
No problem.
Yeah, same industry.
That doesn't matter, anyone can sign, any.
Okay.
Not that the same company manager has to sign, anybody can sign.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I think we have come to the conclusion of the session, we have almost replied to all the questions. Atulasi Ganeshan, necessary that our gate must be in the same field? No, that's not why I told, it is not that necessary. Gate can be from any, any other industry also, okay?
Ma'am, one quick question, so like.
Yes, Prem Kumar.
Is there any guidelines like regarding the signature color of all the?
Signature? No, no, it is not like that, they can sign in blue or green or red, that doesn't matter, that is no such condition.
Okay, rubber stamp can be in blue as well, there is no guideline on that.
Yes, yes, but it should not be digital copy, it should be a physical copy, they should sign.
Ma'am, how we know?
Okay, I think we have come to the end of that.
Ma'am, one second.
Ma'am, one question.
Regarding hospital management one.
Yes.
Hello. Ma'am, uh, so if, like I can get it signed from many senior doctors, right? Like can be a professor.
Of course, you can get it signed from senior doctors, sir.
Whether he should process the M B A degree.
No need, no, for hospital management, any doctor can sign, no need for M B A degree. Or for hospital management, no, no need for P G degree also, any doctor can sign.
Ma'am, how we know this?
Okay, so I think almost.
Can we submit the project report without writing exam in the same form, like the special exam is supposed to be held in October?
Vina, you can submit but not advisable. Kindly submit the project when you are writing the fourth semester examination, don't separate them. Because it is always advisable, your markers will carry all the six together.
Ma'am, project. Pondicherry University as a guide.
Yes, anyone working in Pondicherry University can sign. Yes, 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 they can sign. Kindly type in your questions, we have almost exhausted all the questions, kindly type in your questions, if all of you are talking, we are not able.
Third semester or fourth semester, ma'am.
It can be of any semester, third or fourth, it doesn't matter, it should be relevant to the topic. Even you can take up a topic which is not given in third or fourth semester also, facility is relevant to the specialization.
Ma'am, academic gate, he should have official letterpad or rubber stamp.
Rubber stamp is enough, rubber stamp is enough.
Thank you ma'am. Ma'am, ma'am, I have already typed the question in chat box ma'am, but I want to explain, so I am only asking. The topic necessarily address any problem in the M B A H R M, I am a M B A student. Or can it be an analysis of an M B A H R M environment too?
Yes, anything relevant to H R M, that's all.
Okay ma'am, thank you ma'am, thank you.
Okay, see actually, many of you, I can, you are asking questions just because you have not attended the session, okay? So you are asking again from the starting, so what I would suggest is now, we have answered so many questions. There is no more questions left out, so what is my suggestion is now, this recording, this video is recorded. And this will be uploaded in the D D E YouTube channel, right? So those who have not attended the session and still have doubts, kindly see this video recording in the D D E YouTube channel. And still, if you feel that there is any question, it is not answered, you still have a query, kindly send a query to D D E help desk.
Madam, I want to answer question. The academic gate must be retired or you should have a working ma'am?
Good afternoon ma'am, you told to wait me for a last.
Yeah, Raven, yeah, I'll answer now, what is the question, tell me. Wait Raven, first tell me.
Hello ma'am.
Um, actually my typing is not working properly, so I just want to talk, talk to in my oral. Uh, actually I, I am preparing for competitive exam in banking, so I just wanted to prefer credit rating companies. Uh, between Canada and S B I, I can choose this project, but I, how can I attain a mentor individual because I am a two thousand eighteen batch? I don't know anyone there now, that's what I, I want to know, who am, in the first procedure, what, what I should do? No, I didn't.
Project, simple.
No, no, I am not working in bank, I am preferring for banking exams, competitive exams in home.
Then if you are seeing, otherwise you have to approach a college and get it signed by a teacher.
Okay, what, what should we get initially, initial process, because I know the project.
Hello, hello ma'am.
You get a bona fide certificate from us, send the request to director D D E through D D E help desk. We will send you a bona fide certificate, with that you can approach a bank and get your project done.
I am a Pondicherry, can I visit there and can I ask you any course?
If you can visit the Pondicherry University, come and get the bona fide certificate on the same day, morning you can come. The director is available, you can get it done in the same day itself.
And we can ask any about the course regarding final exam.
First let Raven finish, Raven, all your questions are answered.
So, are we can able to uh, inquiry all the questions related to finally a semester also, no, there?
Yes, yes.
In, in T H department, a controller department where?
No, you have to come to directorate of distance education building. When we come to university, ensure security, they will help you reach the building.
Okay.
Okay. So I think we have come to the conclusion of the session, it is already four. What is the question, Sangeeta?
Uh, my, my question was skipped twice in the chat. Uh, I was asked, I was asking whether there is any grace period after ten days, there is any grace period to submit this project?
No, 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 grace period.
But then in the letter that you send, it was given twenty third, with the hundred rupee fine on twenty third October.
Is that? This whatever we are saying is a practice, whatever controller examination is giving you, the date is exact right date, you have to follow that. Okay, we are not saying anything, control of examination reflects the date, you just follow the notifications given in the D D E website. What I am saying is only advisable for. If all of you are talking, no use, that is why we ask you to write in the comment box, I am not able to hear a single word, okay?
Just a minute ma'am, I'm seeing, the academic guide is a government school teacher who is completed P G.
Anybody? Yes, Achin?
Hello ma'am.
Yes.
Uh, ma'am, for I B whom, we can choose as a industrial guide, ma'am?
Any, any manager, it is not that they have to be in I B, any person who is in a managerial cadre, that's all.
Okay, thank you. Ma'am, one last question ma'am.
Yes.
Hello ma'am. Ma'am, one question.
P C B classes will available in.
Only regarding the projects, please. Okay, we are concluding the session with the project report, we ask. So this is how, it is a hard bound, you can see. So this is how, this is actually one side printed, but you can print back to back. Looking now the project should be. It's just a project report, there is nothing more, it's just a hard bound project report, that's all. Ma'am, can we have a guide as a C A qualified?
Yes, yes, you can do.
Yes, yes, C A qualified, yes, P G degree.
Ma'am, ma'am, I am working at, I select any company from here. Ma'am, I am M B A tourism specialization, may I get a, um, um, gate from commerce department?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, we will get it.
Okay ma'am, thank you.
Ma'am, just one more question.
Share the link.
Just hold on, I am sharing the link, just hold on.
Ma'am, just, just one more.
My question was unanswered, I want to ask one question.
Yes.
Uh, I have some second and third semester exam pending. So do I have to submit the report with fourth semester or when I am giving the second and third also, then I can also submit?
Only during fourth semester, when you are writing fourth semester, by that time only.
Oh, okay.
Uh, ma'am, I am working abroad, I can select any company from here for a project?
Yes.
Yes, yes, you can submit.
Ma'am, if you didn't, if you didn't pay the fourth semester fee, can we write?
We have shared the P P T, you can see in the comment section, okay?
Ma'am, if you didn't pay, ma'am, if you didn't pay the fourth semester fee, can we write exam? Or is there anywhere to pay the semester fee?
Your question is not clear. Amit Kanogia, yes, faculty can be a gate.
Yeah, if we didn't pay this fourth semester fee, can we attend examination or not?
No, no, what kind of question is this, Faisal? We are not applying and paying the fee, how can you write the exam?
I mean, can we apply again or is there any way?
Yes, after, but A R E X you can write, A R E X you can write.
Hi ma'am, the link which you have shared, right, it was states like access denied, you do this check.
Okay, so we have come to the conclusion, as we told that we have recorded this session, it will be uploaded in the YouTube.